Hello. So, for any of you that don't know, I'm Anna Marie Pavlik Rosen, the Chair of the Board. And we decided to try, at the request of new Board member Dawn Hale, the concept of a work session. So this isn't a meeting where we'll be doing any voting, but just discussing the items for the agenda for the next Tuesday meeting, which will be on November 21st. So the first item we have is to discuss the work session format, which I've just covered a little bit, that we're meeting to...I have all the Board members here to go over what the agenda will be, and just briefly touching on each of the items. And the real concentration and voting will be at the normal, regular meeting.
Madam Chairman, if I could just say something?
Yes, please.
I don't know if this is working or not. I just want to thank everybody for doing this, fellow Board members and staff. I know anytime something new is, you know, I'd always look at it as a great idea. So I really appreciate you all being willing to try this. And we can try it for a few months and if it doesn't work, but I just appreciate the effort.
Okay. Thank you, Dawn. And Kathy Jennings has just mentioned that we should do roll call. I think we could just note that all members are here.
Okay.
And that we do not have a fifth member at the current time. And that James Liebman is not here. He had a court date. So, thank you. And so we've talked a little bit about work session format. One thing that I wanted to discuss was the agenda deadline. And that it currently is the Friday before the week before the...well, we have the Board meeting on the third Tuesday, the regular Board meeting. And we proposed this agenda planning meeting the week before on a Tuesday. And that the deadline for agenda items is, for staff and for Board, is that Friday. And I'd like to request that we could possibly make it by 7:30 in the morning on Monday. So that, you know, the real deadline is Friday, but that if someone thought of something over the weekend, that they could mail that in before the next workday, if that's acceptable to staff.
It's going to make it a little bit tighter for us. I had everything done on Friday before I left, and then came in and had to add things on Monday. So I like to get things done early and ahead, you know, ahead of the game, just so that, you know, we've got...we're missing three days at the end of that week that we can get you all your information. We're pushing everything back. So to, you know, move that, it sort of crunches it from both ends. It makes it a little bit harder for us to get our work done. Just, I mean...
What do you think about having that as a target for that Friday, but just having a soft acceptance? If something comes in about the previous Monday, that's still reasonable. But everybody still tries to shoot for that crap. Does that seem to be workable?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think if we...as far as that Monday getting it out, I mean, it just takes us what it takes us to get it out. So if we don't get it to the Board until end of business Monday, of course, we'll try to move it as quick as we can.
And also, well, if someone gave you something at 4:25 on Friday, would you still...
I was here until 5:00, so yeah.
Oh, you would? Okay. Okay, well, we'll aim.
I mean, I just wanted to get it done before Monday, because I knew that, you know, we were going to have this meeting today.
Okay.
And then we'll have to work on all of it, so.
Well, we'll try that, and I'll try to meet the schedule.
Okay.
Okay. And then briefly Kathy and I just this afternoon talked about meeting minutes and requesting that they be done when you're done with them, probably the end of the week after the Board meeting. And that we'd like to review those and approve them, or not approve them, but review them while our minds are still fresh on what happened in that meeting. And then we, of course, would not make them official or formally approve them until the regular Board meeting. But that we'd have those as reference when we're adding agenda items and things like that. So Ralph, would you like to add anything? Or...okay, good. So approving the meeting minutes from October 17th, we'll be doing that in the regular Board meeting. That's item number two. Except the electric water cable financials. David, is there anything specific we need to know at this point, or do you think...
No, you've got them, you have them, and there's nothing that really stands out. So I think just covering it on next Tuesday would be fine.
Okay, good. Unless there are any questions, Dawn?
I haven't had the transcript yet, so...
Right, okay. Yep, so we'll be covering that then. Let's see. Item number four, information item, K-E-M-I, announcement that FPB is Destiny Award winner 2017. I'm not familiar with K-E-M-I.
Kentucky Employers Mutual Insurance.
Okay.
Yeah, Kim can come up and give you a little background on KEMI and what this means for FPB.
Okay. I guess we can touch on it briefly, but we want the official thing to be at the regular meeting.
KEMI is our workers' health period, employers mutual insurance. They do have an award for safety performance based on several different factors that we've been chosen for that award. They've been given and out for seven years, and we've been chosen for six of those years. Out of 24,000 companies, they give out, like this year, 14. So we won a 14 every single award. And, you know, 24,000 people or organizations that can...
Okay. Well, that's very impressive.
And then they'll be here during our holiday luncheon, the awards for the employees.
Nice. Okay, thank you. Okay, and as far as public comment for this work session, if someone had a comment on a specific item, that we would, of course, include that. But if it's just a general comment, that that would be part of the regular meeting. Departmental reports, what David and I had talked about is if there's anything unusual that we'd want to know about at this time, we should cover that. But if it's a regular report that we're expecting, then we don't need to cover that now, unless there's a question.
I don't think there's anything that's time-sensitive that couldn't be covered next week.
Okay, good. Item number seven, award bid invitation for two 15-kilovolt outdoor circuit breakers. Is that your motion, Ben?
Yeah, there's nothing unusual about it. The low bidder wins the award. There's nothing.
Okay.
It's pretty common.
Sounds good. Okay, item number eight, stop-loss coverage, plan changes. I know this is an area that we all need to learn more about.
Yes, this is probably out of today's meeting. I've spent most of our time on this. I know this is Ms. Hale's first run-through with our insurance renewal. We do have to renew it, all that's effective first of the year. But we've got Diane Schneider and Cheryl Brown with FPB in the Human Resources Department. And we've got representatives from Cheryl Morgan to go through and talk about that. If it'd be all right with you, we could do maybe a little, some education, as well as discuss what this next year looks like for us.
Sounds good.
Turn it over to you, Diane.
Okay, well, the interviews are good. We have Cheryl Morgan, Lisa Stam, and Mr. Herb Wright, Ron Curry, and then we have Blair Pickrell, and these are representatives that we work with on regular basis, which is our health plan. If you'd like, Lisa has some information on how the self-funded plan works in general. Is that something that you'd like to go over before we go over the renewal?
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay.
Good to see you, sir. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. You are.
Thank you.
There we go. Good afternoon.
Hello. Thank you for coming.
I'm Lisa Stam. I am Vice President of Consulting Services with Cheryl Morgan. And I've got my associates here today. A couple of things that Cheryl Morgan specializes in. One is self-funding. We do an awful lot of self-funded business. And the second thing that we specialize in is governmental and quasi-governmental entities such as Frankfurt Plant Board. So we do a lot of work in that marketplace. And today, we thought we'd do just sort of a self-funded 101, if you will, just to kind of introduce some of the concepts involved in self-funding. It's not something that most people are born knowing, so we'll just take a few minutes and talk about some of the basic concepts that are involved in the plant board's self-funded plan. There, on the second page of your handout, there are several reasons why clients such as Frankfurt Plant Board decide to self-fund their health plan rather than purchasing an insurance plan from a fully insured carrier such as Anthem or Humana or United Healthcare. And when you decide to self-fund, you're acting as you're an insurance company, really. You're paying the medical claims and the pharmacy claims for your employees up to certain levels. And beyond that, you purchase stop-loss insurance, which is one of the subjects that we're here to discuss today. And you hire somebody to act as your third-party administrator. So they're the entity who processes your claims and actually makes the payments to the providers, and they do customer service for you and that kind of thing, so that your staff is not having to perform those functions. On the next page, the reasons for doing that are first and foremost to eliminate whatever profit margin the insurance company would normally retain in a fully funded environment. So if you were fully insured with Humana or Anthem, they would establish their premium such that at the end of the year, they would have some profit left over. So with you acting as you're an insurance company, we're really trying to eliminate that profit margin. So another reason why employers such as Frankfurt Plant Board self-fund, and this may be actually an even more important reason than elimination of that profit margin, is that it gives you the ability to customize your benefits. You have the ability to be flexible and to design the kind of benefits that you believe are best for your employees, instead of choosing from sort of an à la carte menu of plan designs that the fully insured carriers have to offer. And another reason is that when you have good claims years, you are able to keep the money in the bank that would otherwise be retained by the fully insured carrier in the form of their profit. So unfortunately, this past year was not such a great claim year, but you have had good claims experience in the past, and you will again in the future. And in those years, you're able to keep that money in the bank and use it for other benefits for your employees, or whatever other purposes you need to use it for. And then a final reason why employers self-fund, especially post the Affordable Care Act, is that you're exempt from some components of the Affordable Care Act. And one of those is the health insurance provider fee, which is a significant tax that all fully insured plans pay on their total premium. So it's between 2% and 4% of overall premium for those employers. So you're exempt from that, as well as some of the other provisions of the ACA. If you have any questions at all as I go on, please don't hesitate to interrupt me. So on the next page, we've got a breakdown of the basic costs that comprise your self-funded plan. So you've got two basic kinds of costs, fixed costs and claims costs. So your fixed cost, you're going to have regardless of what your claims experience is during the course of the year. So this is what you're going to pay before anybody goes to the doctor, or the hospital, or has a prescription filled. This is the minimum that your plan is going to cost for the year. And those costs are things like administrative fees. So that's the fee that you pay to Medban, your third-party administrator. And you also pay some fees to a company called HealthSmart. They're your pharmacy benefit manager. They administer your pharmacy plan. You also pay stop-loss premium, and that we'll talk about a lot today. So that's the protection for the plan for very catastrophic level claims. You have access fees that you have to pay for your PPO network. Currently, that network is called Baptist. And in the future, that will...we're going to make some recommendations about that today, because Baptist will no longer be an option beginning in April of 2018. But it'll probably be Cigna as your PPO network in the future. So there's a fee you pay to access those providers. And the reason you need that PPO network is that by having a network of providers, you get discounts on the claims that people incur when they go to those in-network providers. So it saves the plan money. So it's worth it to pay that access fee in order to get the discounts on the actual claims. And then you also pay us, as your consultant, and that's on a fixed-fee basis, on a per employee-per-month basis, actually. And it's all broken down in some of the detail in your packets. And then beyond that, it's all about the claims. So you've got your medical claims and your pharmacy claims. And that's the vast majority of your cost. And we'll show you a breakdown in a minute about what portion of your overall cost are claims costs versus fixed costs. So any questions so far? Okay, so let's talk a little bit more about the administrative fees and what you're paying Medban for. So Medban is really the face of your insurance to your employees. I mean, if you ask your employees who their insurance company is, they're probably going to say Medban. They're not going to say Frankfurt Plant Board, which is in actuality, the insurance company. But they think of Medban as the insurance company, because Medban performs all the functions that a fully insured carrier performs. The only difference is, they don't have the financial risk. The plant board and the reinsurance carrier, the stop-loss carrier, have the financial risk for the plan. But everything else functions the same on a self-funded basis as it does on a fully insured basis. Your members have cards. They call the customer service number on the back of that card if they have questions. Claims that providers want to be paid for, they send to Medban. Medban receives the claims, and they process them according to what your plan document says, and then they issue checks to the providers. And if you're due reimbursements from your stop-loss carrier, they coordinate all of that. So they track every person on your plan, and they know when somebody's exceeded the stop-loss limit, and then they, on your behalf, request that money from the stop-loss carrier.
Excuse me. So does the plant board then get like monthly or quarterly reports on...
Yes, ma'am. They receive monthly reports and quarterly reports. So on a monthly basis, there are some standard reports that they receive, and then we do a really deep dive into the financial performance of the plan on a quarterly basis. Any other questions on the administrative component? Okay, so then stop-loss. So this is your reinsurance, and this is the protection that you have in place for the catastrophic types of claims. And basically, you have two kinds of stop-loss insurance. You have what we call specific stop-loss, and then you have aggregate stop-loss. Specific stop-loss is protection that the plant board purchases that guarantees that it won't pay more for each person enrolled on the plan, so whether it's an employee, a spouse, or a child, than, in this case, $85,000. So once you get to...
I'm going to type it.
Yeah, it says $75,000 on the page, but it's $85,000. So when somebody incurs $85,000 in claims, then you're done paying for them for the year, and then the stop-loss carrier pays. Now, there's another component called an aggregating specific deductible. So it's a little more complicated than just $85,000 per person, but we can get into that when we get into the detailed stop-loss quote. But essentially, that's your liability for every person on the plan. And your stop-loss carrier right now is a company called East Coast Underwriters and Pan American. So East Coast Underwriters is what we call an MGU, a Managing General Underwriter, and they're sort of a middleman, if you will, for stop-loss. And then the actual stop-loss carrier is a company called Pan American. So you'll see both names in different places within your packet. So we talked about specific stop-loss. That's the first kind of stop-loss insurance. And the second kind is aggregate. What aggregate insurance is, is all those amounts that you're paying underneath the $85,000 specific deductible. If you didn't have aggregate insurance, your liability would be $85,000 multiplied by the number of people on your plan. And if you did that math, that's a really big number. And probably not one that you would ever hit. I mean, for every person on your plan to reach $85,000 in claims would be just...it just isn't going to happen. But what aggregate insurance does is it buys down that liability to a manageable level. And the way that level is established is the underwriters look at your historical claims and your demographics and your high claimant situation, and they determine what they expect your claims to be in the upcoming year. And then they add a quarter of 25% onto that. And that's your maximum claims for the year. So with a self-funded plan such as yours, with a lot of claims experience, it's a very mature self-funded plan, the likelihood of hitting your maximum is very remote. You're much more likely to come in at the expected claims level or somewhere between expected and max. But because that quarter is 25% above expected, usually plans such as yours do not hit the maximum. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So those are your two types of stop-loss coverage. And then on the next page, again, the PPO network. That's the network of providers that your employees can use in order to get the in-network level of benefits, and in order for you, as the plan, to get a significant discount on your claims. And currently, that's a company called Baptist Health. We found out within the last couple of weeks that Baptist is actually closing its doors. And so we had to go find some different networks for you to consider. And there are actually two other leasable networks that we looked at. And one is Cigna. That's, I'm sure, a familiar name. It's the same company that's in the fully insured business. They lease their network to self-funded plans. And then the second one is a company called PHCS. So what we've done is a disruption report, which is taking the list of providers that your employees are currently using, and figuring out how many of them are in-network with the proposed network, and how many of them are out-of-network. And as you'll see a little later, as it turns out, Cigna is a better match with less disruption, and the amount of disruption will be extremely minimal, because Cigna's a really wide network with very good discounts. Okay? And that's everything about the PPO network. And then just a little bit about Cheryl Morgan. As I mentioned previously, our two areas of expertise in particular are really self-funded plans and public sector plans. And the things that we help the plant board with on an annual basis are developing plan designs. Because you're self-funded, you really get to design your own plan. You don't have to just choose from whatever plans the carrier wants you to have. And so we assist with development of plan design. We go out to the stop-loss market every year and market your stop-loss. The TPA, Medban in this case, markets stop-loss also, but we do that alongside them. And after we get all the quotes in, and they bring theirs to the table, we bring ours, and we look at all of them in totality, and we decide which one is the one we're going to recommend. We evaluate all your vendors. Couple of years ago, you did an RFP for third-party administrators, and we helped with writing the RFP and getting the proposals in, and analyzing them and making recommendations. We also assist with your health plan budget. David does a really great job of budgeting, but we're available to help him with that. And every year, we help develop some proposed rates based on your expected stop-loss numbers. And then we help you with compliance. When it comes to self-funded plans, there are a lot of laws that you have to be aware of, both at the federal and the state level, so we give you assistance with that. And then we can assist with claims issues on a daily basis. When Michelle and Diane have issues that come up that they're not able to resolve by working directly with Medban, we're always available to help with those. And on the next page, we've got a breakdown of your actual costs for 2017. So I mentioned before the different types of costs that are involved in your overall cost. And as it turns out, 79% of your overall claims in 2017 have been medical claims. And you have had some high claimants, and those have been mostly medical claims and not pharmacy claims. So this is the vast majority of your cost. And then the pharmacy claims are 14% of your overall expenditures. And that's actually pretty low by today's standards. Most of our clients are at about 30% to 35% of overall cost being divided to pharmacy claims. So it's not necessarily that your pharmacy claims are doing that much better than other employers, it's just that your medical claims were so heavy this year that as a percentage, your pharmacy claims look a little better. And then your stop-loss premium and your administrative fees are both about 3% of overall cost. And then the broker fee's about 1%. So...
I rounded it up because I couldn't get a 1%.
Okay.
I couldn't get 100% if I didn't round it.
So slightly less than 1%?
I think it's like 4/10ths of a percent.
Okay. So that just kind of puts things in perspective. Obviously, if you want to do things to control costs, the thing you need to focus on is really claims, because that's the biggest part of your overall expense. Okay, so that's everything on the little self-funded 101. Any questions?
You mentioned you'd want to reduce claims if you could, I mean, to improve your costs, but there's no way...is there a way to do that? I mean, there's...
Oh, yeah, there...actually, there are numerous ways of doing that. And in one way is by having a vigorous wellness program, which you have, and you have had for a couple of years. And the idea behind your wellness program is to get people to have preventive screenings and to have an annual physical. And the end game there, the goal, if you will, is to have people go get those screenings and see their doctors to catch expensive conditions very early, before they develop into like a stage four cancer. So that's definitely one thing that is helpful in controlling costs over time. And then things like plan design, both on the medical and the pharmacy side, can help control costs. You know, if you had a plan that paid 100% for every service, then obviously, there'd be no incentive for employees to be good stewards of the plan's resources. They could just go out and have anything in the world done. And so that would really drive your utilization up and your plan costs up. So we think about things like plan design and wellness in particular.
Has there been any discussion on lowering the premium for employees if they have the physical, the tests, et cetera?
Well, we do have four plans available, and if you choose the wellness plans, then your contribution is lower. It's approximately $50 a month lower if you select one of the well-living plans that requires the tests.
So how popular are those?
Those are the most popular.
Oh, good. Okay. Sounds good.
Can I add anything? Okay.
Well, I don't know if it's related to this part, or if it's going to be answered later.
Go ahead.
On what was sent to us for the executive digest on the first table that you have. Yeah. I wasn't sure what that was really telling me.
You're still on number eight?
Yes.
Okay. What the table shows is the specific and aggregate premium. Is that where you are?
Yeah.
Okay, for the 2017 plan year, this was the annual cost to have that coverage, so that the insurance, Pan American, pays the plan in order to be able to hit 85,000 in order to have that coverage. That's the cost of that premium for the plant board. And so in 2018, it increases from $267,000 to $290,000. And so then the annual aggregate premium also went up slightly.
On what was sent to us for the executive digest on the first table that you have.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure what that was really telling me.
You're still on number eight?
Yes.
Okay. What the table shows is the specific and aggregate premium. Is that where you are?
Yeah.
Okay, for the 2017 plan year, this was the annual cost to have that coverage. So that the insurance Pan American pays the plan in order to be able to hit $85,000 in order to have that coverage. That's the cost of that premium for the plant board. And so in 2018, it increases from $267,000 to $290,000. And so then the annual aggregate premium also went up slightly. We have a organ transplant coverage, so that those expenses are outside of the other medical aggregate and specific premiums, and that is unchanged for next year. The expected medical claims, this we received from the stop-loss carrier based on what our claims have run, probably based on the actuarial, you know, information. So they're anticipating that our expected claims will go from 1.9 to 2.2. There is a difference in the admin fees on the table. It shows $113,000 for both years, but because we're recommending that we switch to Cigna, their network is a little more expensive as far as the admin fee, but that will be, we feel, offset by the discounts that they have with their providers. So instead of 113, it should be 138 for the administration fees for... Well, Cigna is included in those admin fees. This also includes Medbin's fees. And then the dental vision claims, those are not part of the stop-loss coverage. I just estimated those to be $241,000. So that we anticipate the total would be, go from 2.6 to about $3 million. The other thing that I want to mention, though, is there's some additional liability because of some large claimants that we can go over also with the board. Maybe when we go over the proposals, we'll also talk about those, what they're called lasers, so... So that table is just a comparison between 2017 and 2018, what the annual costs are for all those elements of the health plan.
And so that, like, the 2,000 or 241,000 that you mentioned, you estimated for 2018, but we know what it is for 2017?
Yes. I get reports, and based on the claims through October, I just annualized that, and it was 241,000. And those are run pretty consistent. I don't see, you know, they'll probably be, I think that'd be a safe estimate for next year as well, so...
That's good. Okay. David, is there anything that you would want to add from your perspective?
No, I think they appreciate the self-funded plan review. I think that's a good start, just to understand what drives the cost. When you look at, sometimes they'll break this down on a per-employee cost basis, like how much it costs per employee. And I think that last chart on the self-funded handout showing the breakdown, that 79% of your funds are going to medical. I think that's, you know, in a year that that drops down to, you know, 50%, your cost per employee drops significantly. So we've done a lot, we have a whole list Diane's put together of things that we've done over the year with consulting with Sheryl Morgan and other things the board's adopted to keep healthcare in check. So those fixed costs have really stayed very stable. It's just that, you know, our work family didn't have a good health year, so, you know. But, no, I think, that's it.
I may be getting ahead again, but on the next chart under number nine, I see where it shows the employee's contribution, but I didn't see anything in just looking at this briefly, of what the plant board pays for each employee.
I think that Kathy was going to include this part.
It's in your packet.
Oh, it's in the packet.
On the raglan side.
It shows you for 2017 and 2018, what the monthly premium equivalent would be, how much the plant board contributes, and then what the employee would contribute per month and what the percentage would be. And we also surveyed other entities and just kind of give a comparison there for everybody.
Okay. Well, good. It looks like a lot of good information that we're introduced to now that we'll study for the board meeting. Ralph, did you want to add something? Oh, okay.
Excellent presentation.
It is, it's good. Thank you.
So for the renewal, they came back with seven different carriers to compare for the specific and aggregate stop-loss. And the recommendation is that we renew with Pan American and also renew with Medbin as our third-party administrator. Kind of already gone over the table that's in the board digest. The other, some other information, I guess, that we wanted to go over is some miscellaneous changes that would be effective January 1st.
Okay, so you're on item number nine?
No, I'm eight.
Oh, you're on, oh, okay. Sorry.
I am eight, yeah, just right below the table.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
And the first one is to offer genetic testing to reduce adverse drug events. This would be an option for employees that are identified as having prescriptions where there's a recommendation that you have a genetic test before you prescribe that drug and/or if the drug cost is over $2,000. And the plan member could decline to take the test, it would just be offered, but there is potential savings of approximately $11,000 if those plan members who are taking those drugs, and actually those are not the best way, you know, best treatment for them. So I don't, do you want to say anymore about that program?
It's not the kind of genetic testing that tells you if you're going to develop cancer or diabetes or something like that. It simply tells you whether the drug that you're about to take or are taking is safe and effective for you. So there are certain drugs that the FDA requires the manufacturer to put a warning label on because if you don't have a genetic test for that substance, it can in fact be dangerous to you, and at a minimum, it can be ineffective. And so those are substances that you'll be giving employees an option to have the test for. And then in addition to that, really expensive drugs that, you know, if they're not going to work, or if they're going to be ineffective, or if they're going to be dangerous for somebody, why spend $2,000 a month on that drug? Let's find out early on that that's not a good drug for that person, so they can be prescribed something else. So that's the idea behind the program. It's a simple cheek swab. So what happens is they'll get a kit in the mail, and it'll give them instructions for swabbing their cheek and sending it back in a postage-paid envelope. And then what happens with the results of that test is the employee or the member gets a report, and it's a really nice report. And if they want to be, have the test run for all substances for which you can run that test for, they'll be able to do that. And they get a report, it's about 12 pages long, and it says in a very simple format, red, yellow, or green, whether the drug is one they absolutely shouldn't take, one they should take with caution, or one that is safe for them to take. And that report is good for that person for the rest of their life because your genetics don't change. So it's a really great report to have, to take, you know, to future doctor's office visits, or to have, you know, if you get prescribed a new drug, you can look to see if that drug's in your report. And the physician also gets a copy of that report. HR staff won't get it, Medbin doesn't get it, HealthSmart doesn't get it. All that happens is the member and their physician get that report. And then the physician can decide if they want to go ahead and prescribe that drug. It's entirely up to them.
The next change would be to cover gender reassignment surgery. That is something that's required for compliance. We found out that our pharmacy vendor, HealthSmart, is changing kind of their behind-the-scenes processor that they use, and that's going to impact us in that we will need new cards for all of our plan members to also affect mail order. And then as a, kind of as a means for cost containment, we would like to add a provision that requires a prior authorization process for prescriptions that are $1,500 a month or greater that costs that much for the plan. And this would be something that the pharmacy would let the individual know once, when they fill their first prescription, that to continue with that prescription, that the plan, HealthSmart, will contact the physician and send them a prior authorization form to fill out, to, just to make sure that that is clinically, you know, the treatment or the best prescription for that individual. Anything else you want to add about that?
No, I think you've covered it pretty much.
And then Lisa has already mentioned, or we've already talked about, Baptist is no longer going to provide a network, a network beyond March 31st. So what we were thinking is that if possible, we could switch, starting with the plan year January 1st. Is that...
Yeah, so that you don't have new cards issued in January because of the PBM change, and then again in April because of the network change.
Any questions? We're going into the next slide, which is the employee contributions. Because, you know, we talked about that, our plan costs have gone up over the last year, we decided we probably need to look at possibly changing the employee cost sharing or the out-of-pocket costs. We did a little survey of employees, and employees expressed by more than two to one that they would prefer to have their employee contributions changed versus like their deductible or maximum out-of-pocket expenses. So we put together the proposed changes. The largest one would be the PPO family. It's $38 a month higher. We have the most enrollment in the well-living CDHP, the employee in child, and that one is going up 15, 52 a month. So when we looked at the employee contributions, we tried to keep an incentive for well-living. And then we also didn't want to create too much of an increase for any plan or level of coverage. And then we had to consider the enrollment numbers if we wanted to generate additional employee contributions for the plan. So with these changes, it would bring the estimated annual total employee contributions to $284,000, which is an increase of $43,000 overall. Any questions?
I think it's worth noting, if you look at the chart on the prior page, adding in the admin fee change, we're looking at around just under $360,000 estimated increase year over year by adding this additional contribution for employees of almost $44,000. The employees are absorbing 12% of the increase. If you look back at the total plan, it's about nine and a half, 10%. And you can notice on this colorful sheet of all the different comparisons that everybody hovers, you're hovering around that 90-10 split, 90% employee, I'm sorry, employer, 10% employee. And some are actually pay more than that 90-10. So you can see how whenever we change or recommended changes for the biweekly contribution amounts, we're actually, in most plans, the company is paying 90 or less percent of the overall plan cost for each employee. So just want to bring that out, that we had recognized that we have a year, higher plan year, which is driving cost, and employees are elected to use that method of increased premium on a biweekly basis to help cover that. So that's the proposal that we're putting to the board.
Okay, good. Well, I guess that gives us a good opening for studying that and being prepared for the meeting next Tuesday.
Appreciate it.
So now we're on to item number 10. Yes, simply request to have KYMEA record their public meetings. So it's something that we'll be voting on considering at the next meeting.
Okay.
Talking about who would...
Could you hold on a second?
Sure, I'm sorry.
So they haven't done that in the past.
I don't think they did, for Hanson. I think they used to, they used to teleconference them, and I have the impression they stopped a few months ago, and I don't know if there are ever archival recordings kept.
They had, I think, then we made a request to video, videotape it. I don't know if they had, I know they had at one time a camera going for live. I don't, I don't think they had video like we do here.
Right, yeah.
Cameras and so forth.
Yeah, I guess it was just a request to formalize that, and so it gets captured.
Absolutely. Make the request. The meeting, actually, is just tomorrow down in, David and I are going to go down to Owens tomorrow, and that's it, it's at Owens' offices, and we're gonna, so I'll make this, I'll make a note to their secretary, and we'll get it moving.
And so then where will it be assessed at for people to watch it? I mean, will it be a YouTube or a...
That's, that's a good question. Very good question. It depends on the format, I guess, if they made it DVD in years past. I know here, you know, cable would videotape it, and then people could, you know, get DVDs if they prefer, or YouTube now.
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer for it to be online, just to save the administrator having to ask for having the request.
Better medium than a DVD. But I'll definitely bring it up tomorrow and see what...
See if that's possible.
See what they...
Good.
Then maybe next week will just be an update.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And so to have a discussion possibly about who would be our designated person to represent us on the KYMEA board.
I don't know what staff's thoughts on this, or I don't know last time. We just made some suggestions. I didn't know if staff wanted to come back with some candidates for us to consider, and maybe the other board members could come up with some candidates out of staff.
Okay.
Have that discussion in the next meeting.
Sure. We'd like to do that. Okay, absolutely.
And traditionally, how, has it been the GM and someone, or and Hanson, or how has it been traditionally?
The, I'm not sure whether it's the bylaws or the inter-local agreement, that those materials will be in your OSBOR package, but it specifies that the representative, I think the alternate is either a board member or a member of the senior management of the member of the company. So talking board members or senior management staff.
Could you make sure to circulate those bylaws to everybody, so they have them prior?
Yes, sir. We'll have them in the board package.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see, I guess one thing that came up that we noticed from the State Journal about having a resolution to support our efforts in the electrical area as the board, and that I had written one as just an idea where we could start. But I would ask everyone to look over the ideas of making a resolution, whether we want to do that, or what you think it should be, that we would discuss at the next meeting and vote on that.
Yeah, I think the resolution is a good idea, but I think the wording needs to be much stronger and succinct.
Okay, good.
And not include staff, because it's really us, not them.
Right. Well, that's fine. This, I just put together as an idea, so we'd have something to start with. But I'd say, yeah, let's put together whatever you might want to propose for the next meeting, and we'll vote on that.
Okay.
Number 13, begin the process for hiring the general manager by defining job description, reviewing search firm options, considering listings and websites. So I think that all the board members should think about that, maybe consult with staff or other people, and that we'd work on some type of motion to pursue that at the next board meeting.
I really think that this subject should wait until we have a board that's not under cloud, and that we have a full board onboard.
Well, this would be just to start the process, to come up with a description, to come up with a plan.
We all know what the GM is. We've got a good interim GM in place right now.
Yep.
So again, I think this subject should wait until we have a full board in place.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm not clear on how soon me or May will go through the nomination process, but we'll keep that in mind. process, but we'll keep that in mind and, and pursue that at the, the actual voting meeting next week. So, thank you.
Do you have some, like the current job description for Herbie's job description?
Diane has one that was used when Herbie was hired, I believe.
Could that be included in the packet?
Yeah.
Okay. That'd be good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there also a summary of the, the last time we did this process that would be something that would get included for information in the packet?
I don't know that there is, is a summary in the packages and information that I passed on to Rose.
Right, yep, I have that folder.
Yeah, that's all the information that I know of from the, the last time.
And that was seven years ago, so.
Could you share that with the rest of the board?
Sure.
Would that be easier just for you to distribute it for us?
Right, because it, it all came from Diane. It's just a paper folder at this point. But yes. Okay, thank you. Um, this was something that came up. Number fourteen, discuss the addition of a board education allocation to the future FPV GOB budget. And it came up with Dawn's interest in taking a PPA course or power.
APPA.
APPA.
American Public Power Association.
And so we just talked about that a little bit as an idea for the future of having a board education thing in the budget.
Yeah, I think that's great. I mean.
We tried a few of those in the past, but probably why they were so boring. Nobody's stuck around.
You mean the coursework? Oh, the coursework was boring.
I've been, uh.
Maybe come up with something that's more entertaining than this stuff.
The, uh, we utilize a lot of APPA webinars. It's nice. It does cut down on travel. They do a great job. It's essentially having, you know, you can travel to have the same information, but it's, uh, they do a great job of covering a wide variety of topics. The one that we sent out to the board was on a, a board governance series. I think it's around six of them, around an hour apiece. There actually is, even if you wanted to, there's an exam at the end to pass. I know some people might have continuing education. That would come into play. But, um, but sure, I think anything we need to better do our jobs, I mean, we do that for staff. I think it's totally appropriate to have that for the board.
So at the next meeting, maybe you have some suggestions for budget, maybe some suggestions for training that we can consider for those.
Absolutely.
I guess anybody else has pieces they want to throw away, suggest to training.
Sure. They tend to hover, no matter who we use, you know, AWAA, APPA, they all seem to hover around the same price, so it'd be, be good to give you a, a number for that, for the year.
You can look at their website, too.
Yeah, I did go there briefly.
About the power dot org.
Mm-hmm.
And I've gone to the, the MSU trainings they do several times a year, and those are also very, very helpful, especially in the power sector, the market sector.
Yeah, I think it's, I know it's kind of, it sounds kind of odd, but they're, they are very interesting. When you get in and see how everything, I mean, what it takes for, for the electrical system to work across the nation, it's, uh, it's really neat. So yeah, I think, I'll be glad to come back with a proposed number.
Okay. That's good. And it sounds like we did have a budget in the past? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, when Jim Smith was general manager, he was trying to educate the board. We got some of these webinar things. Like I say, an hour into that stuff, everybody could think of half a dozen things they needed to do. So you couldn't, you know, it just didn't work.
Okay, well, hopefully they've improved the program since that would have been maybe ten years ago.
Yeah, it was, it might have been quite that long.
Okay, well.
I think it's a good idea. I think it's something.
Okay, we'll work towards that. And so David, did you want to make any general manager comments at, at this point?
No, ma'am. I think we're, we're good.
Okay. So that concludes everything on our agenda, and we can't add things because this is not a, it is a special meeting. I know there is a request for a closed-door session to talk about some things that we will not be voting on, but just discussing. So, thank you, everyone, for coming, and we'll be prepared for the next regular board meeting.
Do you need a motion to go into closed?
Yes.
Oh.
I move that we go into closed session, uh, under KRS sixty-one, eight, ten, one, F, where discussions that might lead to the appointment, dismissal of individual employee. KRS sixty-one, eight, ten, one, K, and sixty-one, eight, seventy-eight, one, C, allow for closed sessions where discussions regarding records or information disclosed to the agency as confidential and proprietary would, if disclosed by the agency, provide unfair advantage to competitors for the entity disclosing such information. To discuss analysis from E three of RFP data from in-front, KYMEA.
Second.
Okay. So I, I think, Hans, we don't formally close this meeting until we're done with the closed session, or?
That, that, that's correct. And then we'll come, we'll, we'll come out with a closed session, and then there'll be a, someone to make motion to a general.
And we need to vote on the, on the motion to go in, right?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, all in favor to go to the closed session?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay. You're set through. Thank you.